Today is October 8th, 2024. I am right here at the courthouse in Mount Pleasant, Iowa, in Henry County, Iowa, because the Henry County Board of Supervisors had a discussion today, a meeting, discussing the alternative energy overlay and the planning and zoning issues that go with that. So I take you to this meeting today. I want to say, I'm recording this after the meeting, and the fact that I'm telling you that is, I thought it was nice. They start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I did not get that on video today because I was also reciting the pledge at the time. But they started properly at 10 o'clock. And I also got to tell you, this episode is brought to you by Griner Auto Body of Washington, Iowa, using state-of-the-art techniques and decades of experience to get your car back on the road after an accident. Car Doctor of Washington, Iowa. No matter who Frankenstein'd it, they can fix and clean and customize it. McDonald Boneyard of Kyoto, Iowa, for all of your farm equipment and auto recycling needs. Henshaw Trailer Sales of Richland, Iowa. You need a trailer, they've got your trailer, and they fix what they sell and don't in their full-time repair shop. Gerling Repair of Windfield, Iowa. If your mower is dead, call Fred, your Husqvarna, Aaron's, and Graveley dealer. And he also sells snow blowers and repairs those for you as well. B&amp;B Propane and the family of Jet Stops. And Blue Dog Lawn Care of Wayland, Iowa, for all of your residential and commercial lawn care needs. And when the snow starts flying, they'll move it out for you, too. They all present Southeast Iowa today. I'm John Bain, author of Christie's Journey, The Beat Goes On, and your host. Let's go on inside and watch.
Alternative Energy Overlay District Ordinance. We met a week ago today with some suggestions and changes brought about by either myself or Mark or Chad. And I guess we need to continue on and just review some of those changes. Joe looked at the Planning and Zoning Administration, looked at the YouTube video, and just going word for word. And then we had some, in the red, we had some positions I think we need to address. Change, leave it the same. So I'll first and foremost ask, has anyone other than what is highlighted in red here had any other changes, suggestions to what is printed in black? Go ahead, Chad, do you have anything?
I think some of the highlights in red need to be gone over and verified that's what the intent was or what was actually meant for.
I have nothing on this but some other discussion later on, some other issues.
Okay, alright. We'll go down under 6-2-11-2, Alternative Energy Overlay District, number 11-2. It says Documentation of Notification of the Following Agencies. 2A, Request for Reports from the Agencies Below are to be sent by certified mail and provided to the county 30 days prior to the First Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing on Such Matter. For the purpose of this section, it is recommended that any issues be addressed prior to public hearing. Listed are the Federal Aviation Administration, Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, U.S. Bureau of Land Management, Iowa Department of Transportation, Iowa Department of Natural Resources, Iowa Utilities Board, the Office of the State Archaeologists, Henry County Engineers' Office, Henry County Historical Society, Local EMS Fire and Rescue, Mount Pleasant Airport, if any portion of the project intersects areas defined by local airport zoning ordinance. So I was in yesterday. And I guess I will just say this. As Joe was reviewing this, one of the things that he thought was, I guess I'll just, I'll let you speak, Joe. What's your thought was on sending the certified mail and the timeline that it must be back to us?
Well, initially, their language crossed out here. It says that nothing is received from reviewing agencies within 120 days following a request to such agency. The permitting process will continue following a request to such agency. I know there's been a lot of discussion that if we send these out, we have to have them back. If we don't get them back, we're not going to proceed. However, this list is to put people on notification that if you have an issue with this, it's your time to let us know. Send it back, tell us about it. It's the same, when I do most of my things, I send out a letter to people within 500 feet of the project. It would be like me saying, I'm going to send letters to the neighbors, and if the neighbors don't respond, the project's dead. If a neighbor doesn't show up for the hearing, then you can't go on any further. And I don't think that's reasonable at all. Some of these agencies, you're not going to force them to respond, no matter what you do. And to penalize an applicant because a federal agency just says no, I don't see that as being reasonable at all.
When you say no, it says no.
Or doesn't respond. If they don't respond, that means they have no input. They don't care what's going on. They've seen the project, and they have no issue with that project.
So that's just a tip of the hat instead of federal agency? We don't, you know, we're not holding anybody accountable? We're not asking for anything out of the ordinary? We want a simple clearance letter? So you're saying that it's okay to just let them neglect their duties to?
I don't know if neglect is the right word.
I think if they don't have an input... If they don't have an input, a simple paragraph would be pretty easy to put together, wouldn't it?
It would be nice, but I don't think we can force them. And I don't think it would be right to penalize the applicant for the shortcomings of the federal agency. But that doesn't seem one-to-one to me. That they're going to have to pay for the lack of diligence on a federal agency. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, I mean, they have a lot of influence and a lot of clout with those federal agencies. I would think they would be able to say, hey, give me a clearance letter on that.
I have no idea what clout they have with federal agencies. I know a clout I have. I couldn't do anything if I wanted to force them to do something. Well, like I said, if this were sent out to the neighbors, it'd be like me saying, the neighbors, you all must respond to this.
It doesn't say neighbors, Joe.
No, but it's the same. But it's the same thing. It's notification. I send that notice out to the neighbors saying, if you have a problem with this project, this is your opportunity to come in and voice your opposition or whatever that may be. You can extend it and write, and you can show up for the hearings. This is your chance. If you don't show up, then we assume you don't care. And that's the same thing here.
This one's assuming here, too.
Right. If you don't respond, we assume you don't care. You don't have any issues, you don't have any problems with it. Do what you want to do.
Well, that should, I think that's goofy. I think that's giving a wave to be irresponsible. In my mind, but it's an opinion, that's my opinion.
I think, you know, letting any particular agency shut down a project in Henry County just because they don't feel like responding, that seems like giving up local control to some other agency. Maybe, I don't want to respond to this. Or the, you know, some local agency decides they're opposed to the project, and we just won't respond, and the project's dead.
Why aren't they saying that?
Well, that, no, that's exactly what, if you don't proceed if they don't respond, that's exactly what it says. The Local Historic Society says, I don't like this project. We just won't send a response to them, and that kills the project. You've just taken your authority and given it to a local historic society by giving them that power to not respond.
Well, I must be naive and a little bit thick-headed here. I don't think it's that way at all.
Well, if we don't use this phrase, the 120 days, if we respond, if we just say we don't receive it, then the project's dead. That says any one of those agencies can kill the project by not responding. The other language, 120 days, says if you don't respond in 120 days, we assume we don't care, and we're going to continue on with the project with the information we have.
Why would they put that back in then, if you want to be that clear?
That's my suggestion.
May I ask, I will ask, Steve?
I mean, this is a policy issue for you guys to decide, but I somewhat agree with Joe here. They send out by certified mail to all these agencies. What if somebody at that agency drops the ball? And they don't respond? Yes or no, either way? Project's dead because you haven't got a report back from that federal agency?
That's what you're taking away from it.
I think it clarifies it by putting in some additional language that if responses aren't received by a certain time, and that's a time period you guys decide, then this will proceed. And I would like to address Chad's comment about the federal agencies. There's no way we locally are going to hold a federal agency accountable. But it heads with federal agencies for 30 years, so.
I know we got an issue with the federal agency right now.
We do, and I think you and I know what the issue was, so. And if they don't want to respond, they don't respond.
Right. And I get that, but...
So do we wish to put back in? If a response is received, if nothing else? I'll just say if a response is not received from a reviewing agency within 120 days following a request to such agency, the permitting process will continue following a request to such agency?
I would.
Chad, what's your feeling?
So if no response is received?
Within 120 days?
Within 120 days, as it was before, then?
So, yeah, we had taken it out. We had deleted it because it was crossed through.
Would this be an instance of a second, final response? Then we're right back to what Steve was saying. There's no force there. I get that part of it. But I mean, if we ask for these things, and they're not hard asks, they're not hard asks. I mean, they're a simple clearance letter saying, yes, you're good with it, or no, hey, we got problems here because we have an eagle's nest, for example. We have a bat flight wave, whatever the case be, you know? If we ask for it and don't require it, why are we even asking for it?
You're doing it to put them on notice that this project's in possible development. So you're asking for their input. It's as simple as that.
If we want to come up with a timeframe, 120-day response? You know, I'm just one vote here, folks. You know, I...
And it doesn't have to be the 120 days. It's whatever you think's reasonable. If you want to add in other things, such as a response hasn't been received in 60 days, the applicant will submit another letter to the agency. And then, if they haven't responded in another 60 days, right at the 120, move ahead. But again, that's policy. That's not legal.
I just think we need to do, I mean, I think I said a couple of weeks ago, I mean, federal agency asks for a certain form for me, I just can't blow it off. You know, so maybe there needs to be a second call for it or something like that.
What's your opinion, Mark?
They never give you the second notice? How do you give them the one notice and be done? But I'll go along to get something in the language this type.
It's only going with 80 days and then 120? I'm asking.
Well, I think 140 total is more than ample.
So 45, and then, I don't know which number to choose. I'm asking. If you want a second notice? I mean, if you want notification in receipt by day 45, day 60, day 80? And if it's not received, then you send out a letter and ask how much longer? I think the 120 is ample enough time for any agency to respond back to the county. And if they don't respond?
Go 60 and 60. But my one question is, Joe, when you send them out, you have a return receipt request with that?
Yeah, the certified, you said.
Certified, but you also...
Yeah, I said, I have to return receipt on everything. I can clarify that, I can put that out.
Otherwise, they say, well, we never got it.
Yeah, please do. Return receipt request, request. So 16 and 120?
I'd go 16 and 60, what's else?
So 16, then another 60. The next area falls under 6-2-11-3. Requirements for Commercial Solar Energy Systems with the Alternative Energy Overlay District. And it is under 1, excuse me, 4F, Noise. Noise levels caused by the CSVS measured at the property line shall not exceed 60 decibels when located adjacent to an existing residence or residential district. So what we had discussed in our meeting last week was a decibel level of 45 and then five less. So my suggestion is that we remain consistent throughout this and take that down to 45? Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
And the next is under Section 6-2-11-3. Requirements for Commercial Wind Energy Conversion System within the Alternative Energy Overlay District. Number 1, Letter H, Signal Interference. The applicant shall minimize and mitigate all interferences with electromagnetic communications such as radio, telephone, or television signals caused by any CWECS. The monitoring of this, I'm not positive how we would be able to do that without, I guess, individual complaints coming back to the board. And when I say the board, I mean the Board of Supervisors or Planning and Zoning Director and Board.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't add to the end of this to FCC's regulations standard, whatever that terminology may be, that says that they have to be within what the FCC says is acceptable? And then that would put the investigation on the FCC, they're exceeding FCC rules.
So when the complaint comes in, who directs it, do we have FCC?
Normally, we're coming in, I would have to... No, I mean, that's something I do. I get complaints that do not have a county violation, but they'll have a DNR violation. So I call DNR and send the violations to DNR because I have no way to enforce it locally. On enforcement's hand, I don't see how I can, I have no way to know what's interfering, what's not interfering, who's interfering. I have no way to determine any of those things. Put it back on the FCC makes the most sense. They're the ones that sets the standards for interference and so on.
Paragraph H is also lacking any type of time restraint or specific timeframe when it has to be addressed. You know, I'm talking hypotheticals. I'm not saying that they do, but if somebody lives nearby and their radio is blotted out and that's their mode of news and everything like that, I just think, again, if they are losing the ability to listen to their radio, to watch TV, I think we need to have a timeframe put in there. I realize that there's hardships in who investigates it and things like that. I get that. But, you know, if FCC or some of these other federal agencies can't give a clearance letter, how serious are they going to take a complaint from Cornfield County on a television or in a radio, you know? I'm just asking. Do you have a solution, then? No. No, I don't have a...
No, I understand. I'm not sure. I don't know how the FCC would...
You know, I'm the farthest from big knowledgeable on radio stuff and interferences and things like that. I'm just looking after John P. Small Guy that lives right under it that has to deal with maybe an adverse effect.
So I guess, would this be addressed at time of the erection of the turbines?
That's what this is talking about. This is talking about during the application process.
Right. So what happens once the, if they're up? What happens if there's interference once the turbines are up and running? Or is it all verified at point of application?
I think anything can happen that may cause interference. And if I get a complaint, this interference, I think the only thing I can turn to is the FCC. Is say, I have a complaint that this radio is being interfered with. It seems like it's coming from this, you know, wind farm. I can't verify that. Give them all the relevant data and have them investigate. If they're breaking some kind of federal rule, federal regulation on FCC, then they're going to have to come out and make that determination and decide how to remedy that and bring it back into compliance. As far as a timeframe, I don't know. I mean, they're going to do the investigation of the timeframe if they...
You know, I've read reports and heard reports that, you know, if a television signal is interrupted, there's repeaters installed that will boost that further and take care of that. You know, I'm not saying that, you know, it's not repairable or anything like that. I'm just, I want to make sure that everybody's addressed on a complaint.
So shall we insert into H? Reference to the Federal Communications Commission, FCC?
You know, and I don't, if I can add something, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, do.
You know, I'm also naive enough to think that somebody couldn't just legally harass a company and say, hey, I got interference. You know, would there be, you know, if somebody reports something to the local police department, a false thing, you know, a false report of a crime or something, you know, would there be need for a signature and a, you know, hey, I swear under oath that this is a legitimate thing, you know? Because...
I mean, I deal with anonymous complaints on a regular basis. Most of them are anonymous. And I go out and take what they say. I go out and see if I can verify that. If there's a violation, I send a violation letter. If I can't verify that violation, then I just go back to the business I had before. I don't know how they would handle it, but I would assume it would be something in that same vein. And, you know, this isn't really talking about violations after the fact. This is talking about the site plan when they're putting this farm together. And, you know, maybe this, you know, maybe this is something that they need some kind of thing from the FCC specifically that their project will not interfere, you know, outside of legal parameters with any communication in the area. This is reconstruction is what we're talking about. We're talking about the requirement, you know, the site plan requirements.
That opens another question. Should FCC be added to this list of alphabet series agencies here?
Probably wouldn't hurt if anyone more on the list is, you know, that's easily added.
You referencing back to...
To the 11-2 listing.
Easy to add that.
So I'll ask this question again, then. Should FCC be added to H under, should the FCC be added to H, Signal Interference? The applicant shall minimize and mitigate all interference through the FCC with electromagnetic communications such as radio, telephone, or television signals caused by any CWECS? Insert all interference through. Let me write the way it should be worded, okay? I just tried to insert it, and that may or may not be proper.
And again, we don't have any control on time, but I mean, I think it would be the goal to be on a time basis. I just put directed by the FCC.
All interference? Where do you want to insert that, Mark or Chad?
Just the very end, says signal caused by any directed by FCC.
Chad, you mentioned the timeline, but I believe that, this is my belief, the timeline would basically fall under the previous, talking about the 60 and the total of another 60 days. I mean, I don't think we need to specifically put a timeline under H, Signal Interference, because it should then be covered previously in the notification.
I think we need to keep, like I said, we need to keep the site plan requirements separate from enforcement.
We don't want to confuse them, Joe. Hard not to, I don't.
The next portion is under setbacks, 1, Letter A. It says Structures. Each wind turbine and meteorological tower shall be setback from, and what is crossed out is the nearest resident, school, hospital, church, or public library, a distance no less than the greater... is the nearest resident, school, hospital, church, or public library, a distance no less than the greater of A, two or three times its total height, or B, one thousand seven hundred and sixty feet. Go ahead, Chad.
Well, we can't turn back time, there's already two meteorological towers erected, um, so, would it be, would it be the best action just to line those meteorological towers out because we can't do anything with them, they're already put in place?
This is an order, this is an ordinance to going, going forward, there, there may be another project that comes along down the road.
Yeah. Did I, I think we wanna address the ones that are already put up, any future meteorological towers or? Anything like that, because.
I think Joe just, I think Joe just answered that, I mean, we've already permitted, permitted those towers to be up. So, they're there and like you said, we can't go back, we're not, you know, we're not going back. But I believe the way it reads, it is addressing, addressing.
Future.
Future, okay? This is what the ordinance is about, is the future.
There'd be no, no consequences or anything with the existing one, Joe.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, and then it says each, okay, let's, I read out the crossed out part, I'm gonna start over and say structures, each wind turbine and meteorological tower shall be set back from, I read what was previously, it's been crossed out. Continue on all structures, two thousand five hundred feet, three thousand two hundred eighty feet, all property lines, three thousand nine hundred and sixty feet, and a distance of one mile from all in, incorporated and unincorporated communities. All right, we have three different distances, two of them are from structures, the twenty-five hundred foot and the thirty-two eighty are from structures, and the three thousand nine hundred and sixty feet is from all property lines. So, as I stated at the last work session, obviously, we have three different opinions as to setbacks in distances. And two of them are for structures and one is from property lines. So, I believe we need to have further discussion as to why each of those numbers are, were selected by us as individuals on the board of supervisors. So, I'll ask Chad to go first.
I think it's, in my opinion, again, this is my opinion, I think it's important to use property lines as a, a measuring point versus a structure. I, I've talked about that several times, the distances, the, the three quarters of a mile, I'm thinking, what is maximum throw, off throw for ice, debris, anything like that? You know, you look at some of the catastrophic failures in existence right now and the distances are pretty substantial. I think for a, a non-participating person to, to be subjected to debris throw off or anything like that, I don't think's a, a good idea. But again, that, that's my opinion, that's, you know, I'd like to hear you guys' ideas, I, you guys wanna just go with a certain distance, not the property line, is that?
Personally, that's, again, personally, that's my preference, uh, going from structures. The property line would be, I guess, to me, would be extremely difficult to try to enforce. And the reason I say that, I'm just going to use this as an example, and there's maybe numerous farmers, landowners in, in this county who own more than one square mile or six hundred and forty acres. Now, whether they are adjoining one another, or whether someone owns eighty acres in that six four, you know, I'm saying, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, let's, let's just say there's a, a property owner that owns hundred and sixty acres of that six hundred and forty, okay? And that individual owner doesn't want to participate. So, I'm not sure how you would be able to enforce from the property line unless there was a waiver put in place for that non-participating owner to waive that, right? Because when you put, when you put in thirty-nine hundred and sixty feet, it's take over a mile. That's a pretty good distance, I'll just say that, and I, I wasn't very good at geometry, I don't know how far ice gets slung. I don't, I, you know, I, in all due respect, I, I don't know, does it get slung five hundred feet, does it get slung four thousand feet? I don't know that, you know, if the tower is six hundred to six hundred and fifty feet and it comes off the top, top of the blade when it's at the top, it's off, to me, it's obviously gonna go further than if it comes off at the bottom or off at the side, I, and it depends upon the speed, again, I don't, I'm not, I've never been very good at geometry and projectiles and things like that, so, for me to, for me to make that determination is very difficult and tha- that's my reasoning when you have a property line, I gue-. Does that make sense to you? Because if you have someone who owns, let's just say someone owns, uh, twelve hundred eighty acres, you got a six forty over here, you got a six forty over here, you might have them adjoining, and then you've got non-participating members just across the road, okay, because basically if you had a six forty, I've just got, I'm going to make an assumption, it's all within that square mile. So, those are, that's just my thought, you know?
I'll go with the, the structure and, um, I was the one that put in the three thousand two hundred and eighty feet because I have not heard, I've got any information different than from the safety standpoint of that distance to need to be backed from electrical storm. And the other thing is, after watching the, uh, newscast out of Cedar Rapids, I know his material is thrown farther than that and, um, I just feel that that is a safe distance.
Thrown farther than the three thousand two hundred and eighty feet?
Farther than three thousand two hundred.
Or, or even maybe wasn't that far, but even if stuff was thrown, you could throw stuff into an adjacent farmer's field and, and relit- and damage his crop for the future. Material could be embedded in that soil. So, we can't stop everything, but we can help the situation.
Okay. And the reason I chose twenty-five hundred feet was, again, I'm not very good with geometry, but I, I used a figure of six hundred and twenty-five feet for the tower and the weight at its height, I went from six, because we've had talk between six hundred and six hundred and fifty feet, so I basically went four times again, I don't know how far things are strewn when the tower topples over or if a tornado comes through, I.
Or a fire.
Or a fire, yeah, it was, I, I don't know, so, that was my arbitrary figure and that's the way I came up with it, it was four times six hundred and twenty-five feet, if that's the size, the tower and, and the blade at its height. The other, and another thing, and again, obviously depending upon, I shouldn't say obviously, depending upon the sunlight, how far does the flicker go? If it's, and I don't know, I mean, when I go walking, and I go walking in the morning, the shadow is different than when I go walking in the afternoon or at high noon, so, in my mind, I was trying to factor out, well, how, how far is this flicker going to go out? That is a concern for people, I don't, I don't know that, I just thought, well, it was, it was more of a guesstimate than anything, I think, 'cause, and maybe we should, need to research this further about, about the flicker, about the shadowing. We're here for the concern and safety of all of our citizens, okay? And to me, that would be irritating, personally irritating. But that's, that's my reasoning for choosing twenty-five hundred feet. It was in reference to the height of the proposed towers, and I just chose six forty-five, one between six and six fifty, so.
Would you rather have that as four times the tower height as opposed to a flat twenty-five hundred feet?
Well, and that, that obviously, then, if, if, if the company came in and placed four hundred foot towers, I'm not sure how long the blades would be on those towers, so then you would have a reduction.
Well, then, everything, everything you made for the tip of the blade.
Sure, but, well, I guess what I'm saying.
I mean, now, if, if they happened to come out with a seven hundred foot tower, between now and the time they apply, it would increase that by, you know, you'd have it four times seven hundred instead of four times six hundred.
Or it would decrease it as well, if it was, if they came with a four hundred foot tower.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Now, I think.
Go ahead, I.
I think some of the, uh, FAA permitting has been applied for and everything, and I think the heights are greater than even six hundred and fifty on that, and, I'm not, I've never applied for an FAA permit or anything like that, but, have, have you seen any documentation on the?
I have, I have not.
Either is fine, I'm just, I was just pointing out, you were talking about four times, I just wanted to clarify that, you know?
That was my reasoning when I inputted the figure, that's. At some point.
At some point, we gotta come to.
We have to come to conclusions.
Okay, then, I'll, I'll go on from, on this very same thing, talks about one mile from any incorporated or unincorporated property. Why are we choosing that versus anybody else in the county? Any other rural resident?
So, would you say just incorporated properties and take out unincorporated?
No, I think everybody has the same right. Possible, I'm just wanting points of discussion.
What were the written recommend, or the, the written requests from the municipalities?
Two mile, I believe it was two, three mile.
From Winfield?
In Win.
From Olds, from Wayland?
I think when you look at the, the city boundaries and, um, Joe created these maps within a mile radius. The buffer zone, I'll call it a buffer zone. Our, our, uh, smaller cities, I'm not saying that they can't or won't, have not grown at a large rate, I guess. So, I respect your thought mark on this, on the mile, uh, if that's.
I mean, I know, I know that would limit any tower, I'm, I'm just saying, someone in the county come out and say, I have as much right as someone in my area, which would be Swedenberg.
And again, I'll, I'll go back to, and does it come back to the incorporated versus unincorporated, so, should it read just the incorporated?
If we use unincorporated, we're gonna have to define what's that, what that bound, where we draw that bound, because there is no official boundary of the unincorporated.
Correct.
We have planted areas.
We have, which is what I've used, we would have to specify that, if we're gonna use unincorporated, we need to specify where we're measuring from. What I've used on there is basically the plat- the planted areas, like, not even I use their previous city boundary, because they had a city boundary, but of course, Swedenberg and Trenton and so on have never had a city boundary, so I look, you know, look at their original plats and go from the original plat, but we wanted, we probably wanted to find that in the ordinance so we know where we're measuring from, we need a standard. But that's, that's technical, that's not really, just something to consider.
Should we put in from the planted, planted areas of unincorporated?
I, you know, I, I wanna take into account the, the future potential build areas of the incorporated pounds as well as Swedenberg, I mean, if, if Swedenberg wanted to become a, a Tiffin or a, or a west, you know, North Liberty type of thing, it hasn't demonstrated huge growth to date, but I'm not a fortune teller either, I, I don't know what tomorrow would bring or the twenty years down the road or something like that either.
Like Greg and I talked about yesterday, most of these incorporated communities are roughly half developed as they're currently incorporated, there's a lot of undeveloped area within each of those communities. But it's a lot of our half, all developed, and the other half are still in, you know, in, in prop production within the city limits. So, there's already, there's already a lot of potential growth within all of those city boundaries.
I look at, we're just still thinking we can, and, uh, until we make a determination on how many feet from any property line, we can go past the areas of the incorporated or unincorporated.
Okay, so, I heard you meant to a property line, so.
Well, I meant, uh, structures, excuse me.
Okay, so, Chad, I know that, how I feel, and I know that you were set on the property line versus the structure, so.
I mean, I can demonstrate, I can show, tell you why again, but I think everybody has heard that. You know, not everybody builds in the geographic center of their property. Somebody might have a house that's on one far corner and, you know, I, I use the example of a pond in a gazebo and their own little personal nature walk area, you know? You know, I, I, I understand their disagreement with that, I, I get that, but I, I guess that's my thought process.
Just, just to clarify, I wanna, just for me to clarify the, the setback from property line. Going from the assumption that everyone outside the project area who's not participating would not want to waive that setback, then each, and so that there were property owners all around the participating property, that one tower would have to set at least three quarters of a mile inside their own property from, from the nearest neighboring property. Is that what we're trying to get at?
From the property line, however, the lay of the land would be, I, I don't know what the lay of the land would be, but measure from the property line to that machine.
Yeah, but I think, if, I said, that, that's, you, you have to assume some things, because you don't know who's gonna participate, who's not gonna participate, who's gonna waive, who's not gonna waive, but you have to make certain assumptions just to try to get a handle on, you know? If, if this were the case here and, and. If, if this were the case here, and they had to be thirty-nine hundred feet, you know, this property would have to be at least seventy-nine hundred feet across to keep from infringing on the neighboring property. But more than a mile across uninterrupted ownership.
You're assuming that there's nobody on that other side, but, you know.
I'm assuming that there's somebody all the way around them. You would have to have at least almost eight thousand feet north and southeast and west from that tower, within the project.
Have a tower here, and you have a tower here, and you've got thirty-nine hundred eighty, ninety, thirty-nine hundred sixty feet between, is what you're saying, correct?
Well, I'm talking about property, uh, uh, un, unpart, non-participating properties outside the project.
Okay, or non-participating, I'm sorry.
Right. You know, for that not to encroach on there, you know.
I get that. I think property lines are important, let's talk distance, let's talk the feet, I mean, that's. You know, we've, we've already discussed it a little bit. You know, you're at that kilometer, you're at twenty-five hundred feet. I wanted to go a little bit more than that, just as a safe zone area type thing, so. You know, historically, I'm sure there's records kept, but what is the farthest throw off from a, a catastrophic failure turbine? You know? Their, industry has to have those records, I mean.
Do we need to gather that information? Through factual, I'm not sure how we go dot gathering it. Factual natural disasters, mechanical disasters, for wind turbines? And then does that factor into, factor into the distances? Sure could, so, maybe we haven't done our due diligence at this point, nobody? To try to discern what's appropriate, what's not appropriate?
Well, I'd say that, when I've asked for, you know, something other than a kilometer and have received nothing else, I have to go with that.
I understand that, right.
And you know the, the big one that made the news more recent here? You know, a thousand acres of, of contaminated, I'm not saying contaminated, firm ground from, from, uh, the fiberglass and the, the structural materials of it. A thousand acres last time I knew was quite a little, quite a little chunk of ground dimension-wise. Maybe it was all blown one direction, I don't know, but we, maybe we need to look at those distances. You know, there, there has to be records kept on that stuff.
Well, I get the line look up, right now, we're in impasse, no one wants to change anything. Unless you wanna do a little more research, which I, I think we've taken the time, enough time already.
Okay.
But if we need more time, I think we should limit it very specifically, by a certain date.
Go ahead, Chad.
I, I guess we keep coming up with this date, we gotta get done, we gotta get done. I, I guess I'm asking why.
I'm not saying a date, I, we, we, it's just, just continually consuming us. We are getting nothing else done. It's just, it's, it's just always surrounding us.
Well, this is a monumental project in Henry County.
I know it is, I know it is.
I don't, I don't wanna be, feel like them, uh, under the gun and being rushed for it.
I can't, I don't think we've been rushed since we've, uh, been at it over six months.
No, we got a, we put in a moratorium in for a year, that ending in, in, uh, two March, I believe, twenty-five. You know, things like this change Henry County hugely for the next foreseeable future, and, uh. Yep. Where.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for something from both of you to, until we have further research, research done by the end of, I'm gonna say by the end of October, which gives us twenty-two more days, uh, in regards to issues with natural disasters or mechanical, mechanical failures.
Get documentable.
So that we can, we can settle on a setback distance, because I believe that's the factor that we're all concerned with right now. And until we get that information, I don't think we need to, we need to come back after that point in time.
I will certainly look out and, and try to find some documentable cases of catastrophic failures and, and debris throw and that type of thing. And, and, you know, I'll, I'll be glad to do that. I mean, if there's any guidance from industry or, or anything, I, you know.
Because that, that seems to be the point we're hung up on in regards to then setting setbacks. I mean, it's a factor, and I guess I'll put it that way, may, maybe not the only thing, but it's a factor in it. And until we get that information that we can discern and go through, so. I will, so, I don't wanna end the meeting, I don't, I'm not gonna ask for an end of the meeting, because I think we can go on and address further under, uh, I believe that's L noise, audible noise due to C W E C S sites, operation shall not exceed. We put in, crossed out sixty and put in forty-five d B A. Average over a period of fifteen minutes when measured at at least twenty-five feet from any structure existing on the date of approval of any conditional use permit from the property line. Chad?
There were, there were lists in the structure again, I.
Yeah, is it?
I think that property line is important. I mean, that, that may be a benefit to industry, and it, it may not, because, I mean, sound carries with the, the top geographical characteristic of the, the, the top ground. I mean, up valleys and, you know, that type of thing, it's deflected by hills, it, it.
I guess I struggle with the property line, and the reason what's on the property line, I, you know, I don't have any idea. Doesn't there have to be a structure on the property line to measure it? Because you're measuring for the sound level, so. Because it does say at the end, existing on the day of approval of any conditional use permit from the property line. So, don't we have to involve a structure to get the reading? I mean, if you're out in open, open space, you're gonna, you're gonna get a reading as well, but if it's bouncing off of a building, or if it's within twenty-five feet of a structure, right?
Yeah, they, they wanna do it off of the twenty-five foot of the structure to, to catch any rebound and, and bounce type effect, but that's not taking into account the peace and tranquility if you have another part of your yard or, or, or a property that, you know, you wanna enjoy.
Mark, I'm gonna ask for your input.
Well, we're, we're, I guess we're at an impasse here again, because I, I look at a structure, not a property, Mark.
And I agree, I think structure should be in there. I, I just don't, I don't know how you get a measurement. Yes, you can get a measurement out in the open spaces, but our con, our concern should be with structures in the county, if they're inhabited and uninhabited. I, I, I think the str, the, the structure is part, and a main parcel of determining that sound level. I mean, I could be walking, I'll just say I'm walking out of Eastlake. There's really three, four structures out there. Across the, you know, a couple bathrooms, and there's a golf shed, and, oh. But as far as, I, how does it affect me when I walk past the golf shed, I, you know?
I don't think we can do anything here until we get.
Your bub?
The bub done, right now, 'cause we're, everything that we're working on is that. In other words, it's our complete hangup.
Okay, so. I would suggest, and ask for the work session to end until we can gather enough information.
Right, sorry to interrupt. Uh, there's one more section here, I want to just, if we can talk about, um, that's safety, number one.
Okay.
The section is crossed, I asked to discuss that. Before it was crossed out, it said all wiring between wind turbines and seaweed stations shall be, um, at least five feet underground. And then it went on to say, if the developer can demonstrate the need for an overhead line and the acceptance of landlords for this line, such, such option may be conditionally approved by the Board of Adjustment, or it could be done as a variance, I don't, that language doesn't really make much difference. I just, I think there needs to be some due process there. If there's some topographical anomaly that they can't go underground, there should be some mechanism, they can go to the Board of Adjustment and say, we need a variance because of this rock formation or this waterway or whatever, that it can't go underground in this area. I just think that they need to have some, just like anybody else in variance. People come in and they have a, a slope on their ground, they can come in and ask for a variance to get around that anomaly. I think it's just a matter of due process. You have something that's, that can't be gotten around.
I agree.
It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not a killer, but it's, I think, I think there should be a process in there, the way to deal with situations like that, that we've built into the system.
Chad?
Last I knew, there was trenchers that can trench through solid rock.
I mean, anything can be done. I mean, we can go to the property office and say, you know, hey, you've gotta spend ten million dollars to what level your property.
It's not property, I'm putting it in.
Well, it's, it's the applicant, we'll call them the applicant.
Okay, the applicant, I mean, they got some additional billing costs then, don't they?
Well, if we, if you don't give them a variance, yes, they have some addition. And as with the Board of Adjustments, they look at that additional cost and say, this is reasonable, this is not reasonable. And decide what, you know, what they can do. It's like, it's, it's due process, and it gives, it gives them a place to appeal if there's, if there's an issue. I mean, it, it was a, a deal breaker, I don't think it makes a huge difference, but I, I think it would, we can get off to have it in the future as opposed to having to take it into court and fight over something that we may not have to fight over. That's just, that's just my input from a, from a enforcement and administrative standpoint.
I think that's something we can look back at, though I have two other things to say.
Okay.
No, Greg, and, uh, if we, I mean, we met, I mean, we're, we're not, I, I think we need to plug away at what we can plug away at.
Okay. So evidently, I skipped pages, because that was the last thing, last chronological thing that I had, Chad.
The one other thing, two other things I have to add. You know, we're, this is an ordinance that we're working on, and I think we need to look at the, some of these non-ordinants, is how, if towers are erected in Henry County, how does that affect us in growth with that seven eighteen?
Yeah.
Wow. I mean, I'm, I don't wanna just sweep it on the rug, it's the right thing. I, you know, I wanna know, it is right thing or it isn't the right thing? And I think we need to do a little thinking about that on our own too, or find out from Nathan or from some other authority on that.
Well, yeah, and I did speak with Pete yesterday in regards to, I spoke with him, uh, in regards to tower heights. I think he referred to Mahaska County, and based upon speaking with him, a tower of, of these proposed site from R W E would be approximately valued at five billion dollars. I mean, you can, we can confer with Pete and Nate on that again, but the ones over in Mahaska County, I think he said were, you know.
Are those comparable height machines or?
I'm not gonna say what the dollar was, because I don't remember specifically. But his best guesstimate is that the towers, if they're six to six hundred and fifty feet within, the valuation would be five million dollars per tower.
And then, at, at best, then after seven years, what, thirty percent of that value would be there?
Thirty percent, yeah, and you, well, you'd have to take off the.
We just, we just need to look on how it's gonna affect.
Because it's, it's rolled back ninety percent.
We know that how many dollars we might get, but how is it gonna affect us all the way as far as the difference?
Sure, hard growth.
How you waste, now, what that actual hard dollar can be?
Okay.
I mean, we haven't really, we talked on part of it, but not the whole thing.
Correct. Chad?
Under the noise part of it, uh, the two, I had, ambient noise level measurement techniques shall employ all practical means of reducing the effects of wind-generated noises at the microphone. Ambient noise level measurements may be performed when the wind velocities at the proposed project site are sufficient to allow wind turbine operation, provided that the wind velocity does not exceed thirty mile an hour. Well, if the turbine is moving and, and in operation at above thirty-five, or thirty miles an hour, wouldn't that be a, a good time to measure that noise? Because from experience, Greg, you and I went to, uh.
Centerville.
Centerville, and the faster they spun, the more noise that we heard.
Correct.
Uh, I know they can adjust the, the pitch of the blades that affect the noise levels and things like that, but, you know, if. and things like that, but, you know, if, I guess if you want to measure the true noise from them, you would want to do it at any operating speed that they're in operation.
All right, let's just make note of that. It's under two, correct, Chad? You've got an ambient noise level exclusive development question?
Yeah, I think reducing the effect of wind-generated noise at the microphone, I think that's like a, a windshield on the microphone, I think, is what you're talking about there. Isn't that, isn't that the, the reference or the, you know, get the, on a microphone, put the foam over it type thing, that would?
So let me ask, your concern is the thirty mile an hour, they should be, that should be?
Yeah, I, I think versus stopping any measurement at thirty mile an hour, I think any operable, operating speed, you know, I, I, I think they cut out or, or stop generating at a certain RPM.
Any, uh, changes that you wish to make in that doc, in that section? I mean, how do you, how wish, do you wish it to read?
What if we just remove that from the comma, providing that the wind velocity does not exceed thirty mile per hour at ambient noise measurement location? Wind turbine operation period.
All right, you want to?
I mean, that's just...
Delete that?
A thon.
Okay.
It's all right, I, I just have other thoughts.
All right, let's just put, put a question mark about it. I don't know that we need to make a decision on it today.
I'm just gonna make a comment.
Go ahead.
I know we have the moratorium in place, which is the right thing to do. It just looks like we're working here, we're doing our due diligence, I'll grant you that. It looks, looks like we're trying to stymie anything possible. Um, so, that's where I want to decide if we're going to do it or not do it. I mean, I, I'm at that point, pretty much.
When you say stymie?
We're, we're, we are throwing roadblocks up at a, anything we can to not have wind power. And I'm not saying I'm for wind power, or not, or solar. I just think that we need to go on, because, uh, everything we're doing is we're just waiting and waiting and waiting. I mean, okay, I, I agree, maybe we, we do need to wait till the end of the month and get, go do our other homework. But after that, all this other stuff is just wasting our time, is the way I feel.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to add, Chad?
I, I, you know, some of the other counties that have just, out and out, just said no wind towers here. Uh, I think some of those don't even have prior zoning regulations, is that right? I mean, how are they doing that? I mean, why are they doing that? That, that'd be interesting to know how and why they're doing that, uh, just for information.
Anything further? I'm going to ask to adjourn, I'd need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second? Motion signed on the floor, any discussion? Are you, and all those who are a fan of adjourn will respond the same. Aye?
Yeah.
Aye, all the same simple.
Obviously, more discussion and thought needs to take place, and it seems like October thirty-first is the date, uh, that they'll be focusing on this again. I want to thank you for watching, and I want to thank our sponsors, Griner Auto Body, Car Doctor, McDonald Boneyard, Hinshaw Trailer Sales, Gerling Repair, B and B Propane, and the family of Jet Stops, and Blue Dog Lawn Care. I'm your host, John Bain. Stay friendly, Southeast Iowa.